This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll call to order this meeting of the Stratford Zoning Commission at 7:02 PM. All five of the regular members are present, so we'll go straight into our agenda. We also have with us present alternate members for DeTte and Manaus. Okay, 2296 Main Street, Petition of Churchill Properties LLC, seeking a site plan review and special case to establish professional office, offering veterinary outpatient services with a second-floor apartment in an RS4 zone. Is the petitioner present?
Yes, I'm here, Kathleen Ferron.
Okay, please just give us your name, but give us your address, and then just give us your presentation, what you'd like to do.
My home address is 282 Park Boulevard, and I'm here to propose the veterinary outpatient clinic, as you said, for 2296 Main Street. I have an accepted offer on the House contingent on zoning approval, so I'm presenting. I have permission to do this from the current owner. That was all in the information that was provided to you. Am I able to share my screen? Jay said that I might be able to, that he just needs to grant me permission somehow.
Yes, I can, if you just give me one moment, and I will make-
I believe he can. We've done it before.
It's not a huge deal. There are only six slides, so I don't want to take too much of your time, but I would like to just present a few things. Do I have to do something here? Share? Or is that you? Can you see that now?
Okay, it's loading.
Sort of.
Yes, we can. Good.
Do you see my whole screen, or is the picture cut out like this when I look at it?
Okay, now, we see the picture, 2296 Main Street, Stratford, and then there's a picture of the building, and then all the text from proposal to second-floor apartment below it.
Okay. All right, perfect. So I want to point out to you, first of all, thank you for your service. I know that this is all volunteer. I've done, I used to live in Trumbull, and I had been on the Board of Ed, and understand and appreciate how much time these volunteer physicians can take. So I wanted to start with that. And I wanted to point out what has changed in veterinary medicine. If I can, this is really weird, the way I'm seeing this screen. I apologize. But maybe I can move this over. I can actually not even see my scroll bar.
It's down below, I think.
See, all of your pictures are there, is the problem. You're superimposed on top of my-
Oh, okay.
And we can see your screen, your cover slide here.
And you see only the slide. See, I don't know how to advance the slide with you covering my advance button.
Like spacebar?
Oh, wait a minute. I think I'm moving this whole thing. There we go. That works. Okay, got it. I want to point out to you what it is, what I'm proposing and what I'm not proposing. And that is something like this. Veterinary medicine has changed over the past 20 some-odd years that I have been a veterinarian in Connecticut. Twenty years ago, there was an overnight emergency clinic, and most animal hospitals did their own surgeries. They hospitalized their own animals overnight on IV fluids. And more recently, we have these 24-hour clinics that are available for both emergency and referral, and it's made most of us not do that, understanding that the standard of care is better at these clinics. And because of that, we're doing, we're still doing surgeries, we're still doing x-rays, but it's all in an outpatient basis. And if they need 24-hour care or referrals, then we send them to clinics like Shoreline on Bridgeport Avenue in Shelton, and there are actually several of them around, very easy access for most of our patients and clients. So that's not what I'm proposing. What I'm proposing, I had a whole bunch of pictures of different clinics like this in neighboring towns, something like this, Fairfield Veterinary Hospital. It's on a small lot, similar to 2296 Main Street, at .18 acres, and has a church across the street from it, residential neighbor on one side and a business on the other side. This is my place in Trumbull, and it was actually zoned residential when I first made an offer on it. It is still surrounded completely by residential properties on both sides and in the rear. So this is the kind of thing that I think would really fit nicely with 2296 Main Street. And I can answer a whole bunch of questions about it, because I've already done it once, and I'm looking forward to doing it again. These floor plans you already have, I know in my existing structure, I don't use the upstairs for anything but an office in the front, and the rest of it is storage, for the most part. Understanding that I'd be able to do an apartment upstairs if I wanted to, and that's what I'm proposing for 2296, where the downstairs would have two exam rooms. There's an existing handicap-accessible ramp coming up here to a door, and that would be the waiting room. Treatment room is something that we use for procedures that the owners are not necessarily present for, surgeries, or x-rays, or giving fluids and that kind of thing, again, in an outpatient basis, and then an office back here. The upstairs, because, and these mats, you can see, this wall is the plumbing wall here, and the bathroom is existing. I'm proposing putting a kitchen here, and then there could be a living room and a bedroom. This is a very small room that would only be suitable for a small office for the apartment that I proposed using this here for the office for the clinic. And the map you already have, there's room for, and I think that this was written somewhere, I proposed a garage, but I need historic approval for that, and therefore withdrawing it. But there is room for two additional parking spaces there, leaving a total of 12, one or two for the apartment, and more than enough, based on my understanding, depending on what you would call my clinic, it's a medical office, it's supposed to have one parking space for 165 square feet, and I would have enough for that, if that's what I'm considering, although I know for a fact that this is more than I would need. As far as things that are more obvious about what you would worry about with a veterinary professional versus a human medicine professional or an accountant, is noise and odor potential. I've been in my place for 10 years and haven't had a single formal or informal complaint about either one of those. There is a noise ordinance in Stratford. It's Chapter 142. I looked at it, and I see absolutely no problems. In fact, the dogs rarely bark when they go to an animal hospital. They're barking in their own properties to alert their owners of something, or separation anxiety, barking at people on the street. But when they come to the animal hospital, they've got their nose to the ground and don't usually do that. As far as odor, you know, we scoop all the time, and most people still do. The places that are scooped are usually your own backyard after a winter like this. So that's it. If you have any questions, I am happy to entertain them.
Very good. Commissioners, questions?
Yes, Alex Vacola.
Commissioner Vacola proceeds, sir.
Yes, I just want to know, what would be the hours of operation there?
Hours of operation? It depends. I'm, you know, five to 10 years away from retirement. This is sort of part of my retirement. I would probably only operate from about 10 to 4:00. But I would propose allowing operations from 8:00 to 6:00, 8:00 to 7:00. The noise ordinance, I don't have it right in front of me, but I could pull it up, has, I believe, 8:00 to 8:00.
Okay, thank you.
This is Mike Henrik.
Commissioner, proceeds.
I assume all the mailings went out, the neighbors were notified.
Yes, they were, they went out two, over two weeks ago, and I provide the certificates of mailings to Jay, and the copy of the letter that I sent. There were, I sent to the town, because the town's abutting across the street in the church, the two neighbors on either side, and then there's a residence behind, and I did send all those out.
I can confirm, Commissioner Henrik, we do have those certificates of mailing.
Okay, great. And you did say that there's no real overnight housing of any of the pets?
No.
Okay, all right. That's it for me.
Okay. Mr. Vigliotti and Mr. Francis?
Yeah, Mr. Vigliotti, Jim Vigliotti out of here. So if you're doing surgery on premises, I'm just wondering, like, do you have a service that comes to take medical waste away, or what do you do with that stuff?
Yes, there's a service that picks up medical waste.
So just like a normal, like my general practitioner's office, there's, you-
Right. Yes, yeah, we have a service that picks up sharps, containers, and other medical waste.
And then what about if you, like, litter boxes, or whatever the equivalent would be? Is that just stuff you throw in your regular waste receptacle?
Yes, that would go in regular waste. Litter boxes are, if we're doing a surgery, for example, a spay on a cat, they're waking up from anesthesia, and we do not give them a litter box. That's more for overnight stuff, anyway. We don't keep them long enough for them to need it.
So little to no animal waste?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, unless they go, unless they go outside, or inside when they're scared.
All right, great. That's good for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I just have two questions, actually. Are you going to use regular garbage cans for-
I can't hear you very well.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So are you going to use a dumpster, or like, regular garbage cans there?
Regular garbage cans.
Okay. And the second question is, now, maybe this goes to Jay, this is Christa Francis, by the way. Did any, have you reached out to the surrounding residents, and there was no feedback at all, or was there like positive feedback, like, oh, you know, it's a great addition to Stratford? I mean, did you get anything, pretty much?
Well, I'll let the applicant respond first, and then I'll follow up.
I didn't hear anything. In the letter that I sent to the abutting property owners, and like I said, there was only one residential property that abuts that, I included my contact information, my name, and my cellphone, and I didn't hear from anybody.
Okay, and this is Jay Hibansky here. I didn't receive any feedback or written, or phone call commentary from the public. I did receive a letter of support from the Office of Economic Development for the town of Stratford, from Mary Dean. She'd asked me to read her letter into the record. Dear zoning commission members, I am writing to express my support of the petition filed by Churchill Properties LLC, seeking to establish a professional office, offering veterinary outpatient services, with a second-floor apartment in an RS4 zone. The owner, Dr. Kathleen Ferron, PhD, DVM, successfully runs a home veterinary supplies, home veterinary services LLC, out of 1918, out of a 1918 home on Churchill Road in Trumbull. The property is impeccably maintained and peaceful, and Dr. Ferron's respect for the neighborhood is evident. Perhaps the greatest testament is the fact that Dr. Ferron has never received a complaint from any of her neighbors. Rather, their pets are her patients. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Mary Dean, Director of Economic Development. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, great.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have.
Okay. So just my last questions are, so just the comment, the P and Z comments there was just about how the property is compatible and harmonious with the existing neighborhood's development. So from what I could see on the, on the, your first page of your presentation, it looks like there's going to be no structural changes to the building. Is that be correct?
Correct. Yeah, the building outside is not going to change.
And is there any exterior signage, or anything like that contemplated?
I would like to have an exterior sign. There's actually one there now. I don't propose doing anything, you know, bigger or different, just with a different name.
I'm not sure if I froze, or everybody else froze. I had asked, is there any exterior signage in your, that you're planning on having for the facility?
Yeah, I would, I would like to have an exterior sign. There is a sign there now for the current business, or businesses, and I would like to have a sign with my business name on it. That would be the same size and location. Can you guys still hear me?
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm getting some choppiness. I'm not sure if it's me, or if it's, or if anybody else is experiencing that as well.
It's you.
It's me? Okay, well, that explains that. Okay, but you got, you guys got an answer, though, right?
Yes, we did.
Okay, good. I won't ask it any further. Any further questions to the petitioner?
None for me.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll take, we'll take a motion to close this petition. It's a public hearing?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. Mr. Henrik, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Francis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. We're closed, so we'll take a motion to recess the public hearing and proceed into our administrative session.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Yeah, thank you. By Mr. Henrik, second, Mr. Vigliotti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. So we're out of the public hearing at 7:18 PM, and we will go directly into the administrative session.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Henrik.
Make a motion to approve 2296 Main Street Petition of Churchill Properties LLC.
Motion to approve, but, oh, take it off the table, right?
Is it on the table?
I don't even know.
Yeah, we never motioned to take it off the table.
Okay.
Well, it just says vote on items, but make a motion to take off the table, 2296 Main Street.
By Mr. Henrik, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Vacola, I think. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. So off the table.
I would make a motion to approve 2296 Main Street Petition of Churchill Properties LLC.
Okay, motion to approve by Mr. Henrik. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vacola. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
It would seem that the applicant, what the applicant is looking to do would almost seem as a seamless movement into, into the new building. Her past history in her, in her other practice in Trumbull seems to have presented no issues whatsoever. I think it would be a good fit, you know, minimal traffic, no real long-term pat, no noise, no odors. So I think she's done a good job of presenting her case, and I would see no reason to deny it. It seems to be a good fit, and based on Mary Dean's comments and the lack of comments from the neighbors, I think it would be a great fit, and I'd be in favor of it.
Okay. Comments from other members, or discussion?
This is Commissioner Francis. I agree. I think it's an asset to have, I mean, a lot of tough pets, and I can understand it, because I have one. So, and you're actually closer to me, too. But anyway, I think she, you know, she keeps an aesthetic of the building, to the whole area, and I don't think it's a big problem, but I think it's a big asset to our community.
Very good. Other comments from members? Mr. Hibansky, did you have your hand up there?
No, sorry.
Yeah. So I would just add, I agree with those statements that have been made. It seems like this, this does seem to fit, and it seems like the petitioner has an excellent track record, and has gotten the recommendation from the town, which is very helpful. And I don't see any issues that we need to address in here. So if there are any conditions, and I believe the petitioner has made clear that they will be controlling and have accounted for any of the special case requirements, which include the noise or odor from any animal waste. So that was a good thing to bring out into the discussion. So if not, I think I'll just call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Congratulations, Doctor. We wish you well.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of 2:24, 21?
Motion to approve the minutes of 2:24 by Mr. Henrik. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Vacola. Any discussion, corrections, changes to the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Any cam site review, Jay?
No.
Anybody have any items for zoning enforcement? I'm actually going to have to send one to Mr. ForDeTte. I've seen a few properties that are, need some love and care, but I don't have them in front of me right now, so I'll have to get them to you later. Any other enforcement questions? Okay. Any accessory application, apartment applications, Jay?
No.
Okay. Sentimental erosion control. We're really blowing past this stuff.
No, nothing.
Let's go right down to other items. 411 Barnum Avenue, donation recycling station.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, this is, oh, I'm sorry, this is Jay Hibansky.
Jay first, and then Mike. Yep.
So we received a request for one of these. This is Jay Hibansky. We received an administrative request for a neighborhood donation recycling station. I think we've all seen these all over the place, and this one looks to be one from the 21st century here. And, you know, it has some lighting, some security system on it, and 100% solar powered, ADA accessible. And, you know, I think typically, these have always come before the zoning commission for administrative consideration. After looking at the site, it's going to be in a portion of the parking lot, which I don't think we see too many motor vehicles. When I did a site visit on multiple occasions, there were no cars parked in that general area. I have no general concern regarding this application, and I know that the commission, you know, maybe had some questions for Commissioner ForDeTte regarding maybe how this might relate to some blight issues in other areas of town, and I will just turn that back over to you all. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Henrik.
Yeah, I was just going to ask before you get Mr. ForDeTte's comments, since we had asked him at the last meeting. I'd be curious to know his thoughts there.
Sure thing. Commissioner ForDeTte, prepare yourself, and let's give your, give us your take on these, since you've, you know, since we, this was on the agenda last month, or there was a request to put it on, we ultimately didn't, but I've been looking for these all during the last month, so that I was ready for it. So, Mr. ForDeTte, why don't you just give us an overview of what your experience has been, and anything that you could contribute to our discussion?
Certainly. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. I don't believe we need any more of these around town. I have had three donation bins removed from the Home Depot parking lot, because people just show up and just throw their stuff all over the place. I've had the same incidents at 9/11, although they have gotten a little better, but I believe that's where this one plans on going, and I can, I can only foresee that it's going to be adding to the blight into garbage just dumped all over the place. I'm having one removed, as we speak this week, from the old gas station on Ferry Boulevard at the corner of Willow Street. I've given them five days to remove it, so hopefully that'll be gone shortly. So I just truly don't believe we need anymore, and I believe the mayor has got a plan for something very similar at the schools that should be either introduced or they're trying to get in place as soon as possible. So, you know, my opinion is, I just really don't think another one is necessary.
Okay. Comments from other members, or questions?
Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
This is Commissioner Francis. Mr. ForDeTte, how many do we have in town, anyway? And I've seen them look quite astonishing some time, that so much trash piled on the side of it. How many of those locations do we have in Stratford?
We probably, I'm going to guess, probably have about 20 of them throughout the town for different charities, or different other companies that claim to give everything to different charities.
So we're not lacking as a town, and those donation bins? Because there are good things, but, I mean, too many of them with not being taken care of is, can be an issue, correct?
Correct. The best-run one that we have, that's the cleanest, is the one over in the Burlington parking lot, but that one there is manned at all times during the day. So they keep that very, you know, tidy and clean. We don't, we don't have any issues at all with blight over there.
Okay. That's one question I have.
And, I mean, that's obviously only a short walk from where this is proposed to.
Correct.
Yeah, so are we flooding it, putting more in here than we really need to?
Yeah. Well, like I said before, I removed several of those bins from right across the street over at the Home Depot.
Oh, okay, so that's, yeah.
So that, actually, that was more of a dumping ground than anything.
Okay.
I just have one comment.
Any other questions?
We have an effort through the town, right? We get those pink plastic bags that if you have clothing to donate or recycle, you could put that out with the recycling, you know, every, whatever it is, every other week. So there, there's even opportunities through the town recycling plant for, if you want to donate clothes or recycle clothes.
And thank you, Jim, for bringing that up, because I believe that's the exact program that the mayor is trying to put in place at the schools.
Yeah, so Commissioner Henrik, I'm, I'm all in favor of charities and donations, and, you know, as we do here on this board, donating our time to better our communities. But I don't know that this is necessarily the best approach for it. I know some of these are for profit, some are not for profit, but it just seems like we have opportunities for people to donate items if they choose, through various boxes or different charities, and just to bring another, you know, if Mr. ForDeTte didn't have a long history of issues with these, I might look at it differently, or say, let's give it a shot. But I think based on the history, and I know, I don't know how busy he is, but I'm sure he's, be happy if we don't add more to his workload. So I just, I, I think there are better ways to go about it, and hopefully they won't take offense to it, and will continue in their charitable efforts, but I can't see this as benefiting the town.
Do you care to make a motion, sir?
Well, based on, yeah, I would make a motion to approve, just because that's the proper process to go.
Okay, motion to approve, Mr. Henrik. Is there a second? I'll second that, just so we can get this through procedurally. Any further discussion? So a yes vote is to approve it, and no vote is to deny the application. So all in favor? And all opposed? No?
No. No.
Okay, that's zero in favor, five in opposition. The, the application is rejected. Okay, moving on. Zoning Home Resolution. Commissioners, this is something I asked to put on the agenda, and I do my darndest to try to keep this commission out of the realm of the political world. We're elected, yes, but then, you know, we act more as a judicial body. But what's going on up in Hartford is there is a number of bills that are pending that would remove some of the jurisdiction that local zoning commissions have. They had a public hearing on a whole bunch of them last week, and it went literally at around the clock. They finally called me, my name, to testify at 5:20 in the morning, which, at which point I was blissfully still asleep. And then by the time they came around for the second round, I was already stuck in, in work meetings. The specific areas that I want to just bring to your attention is, they are looking to do, make a number of things- make a number of things as of right. Uh, specifically regarding uh, multi-unit housing within a quarter mile of a transit station. Um, so in the case of Stratford, it does include our train station. Um, and then there's some sort of vague language about uh, within commercial corridors, which obviously could be quite a bit um, bigger. So um, they're allowing, they want, in some of the proposed language that's in there is uh, it would eliminate public hearings for certain housing developments, which they call middle housing, which is actually something that is being examined thoroughly by the Stratford Housing Partnership and I thank uh, Mr. For Dead and Ms. Manos for joining us on that discussion the other night. Uh, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses, and they call cottage clusters, high-density, single-family units within central open area. Uh, they want to eliminate the public hearings on this and um, allow it to be by right within those, within a half mile of the transit station. Um, it would remove any height setbacks, landscaping or design standards and it would re- eliminate the um, parking requirements uh, for the area. And as we all know, as we've, most of you folks have been through a number of these uh, developments, especially the number of them that appear in the center. And Stratford, I think, was very forward-looking when we developed, developed the uh, the TOD regulation uh, several years back. I remember Commissioner, former Commissioner Jim Sheridan and myself sitting down with a map and drawing it out. Uh, you know, enabling that legislation to actually allow this to happen and we've seen some good results of it, starting with eleven eleven and uh, a few of the other projects that have been developed and has actually increased our, in some cases, increased our um, quantity of naturally occurring and sometimes even legally defined um, affordable housing. And so we've gone through a number of those things and um, one thing we've also found is that parking is a serious consideration in a number of these applications. Uh, because our area is too dense, especially with the turnpike and the railroad station very close to these developments. We can't have on-street parking for all of these. And I know some of the feeling is that people that live this close to the railroad station, they're saying that they won't have cars and they'll use public transit and I, I find as much as you might find that in certain places, I don't know that we're necessarily set up for that. Um, they are using uh, Massachusetts as a guide for the um, for the uh, the, these regulations and they're talking specifically to people that live on the, the T system outside of Boston, which is quite a bit different in its arrangement than um, the Metro North system that, that, that we have down here. Um, we continually talked about eight dash thirty G and I believe Stratford has been trying to get further along with that. Um, but uh, this will now require, although this one I could actually probably see a little bit of logic behind ten percent of affordable housing if you're actually going to have an affordable housing development, because every time we add market unit housing, our percentage actually goes down. Yeah, there's a couple of other things that might actually be good. Um, um, as far as training for land use members. But I think the bottom line that I want to bring here is that we are charged by state statute, by our town charter, by our town regulations as uh, overseeing the zoning and the land use of our towns. And I think what we've done in all the years that I've been involved, more than eleven on this commission, over fifteen in between planning and zoning, is that we take our jobs very seriously. Um, we render judgments, which are subject to judicial review, as we all learned with our vote-thon. We had a couple last year one time. And we take stop problems before they happen, because we have the local knowledge of how all of these different systems will flow as far as parking, the environment, impact to public safety. And, you know, I think our decisions have actually, in some cases, have held up actually in court. And for um, the state and these, lumber of these laws are written specifically by a special interest group to take this power away. Um, I know a lot of our fellow commissions in other towns uh, have asked us to pass a resolution um, in opposition to them. I'm certainly happy to join any dialogue the state would have on our zoning regulations. But at this point, it seems like they are consulting heavily um, with different interest groups and leaving uh, the people that have been working on zoning for years and years in the towns out of this. So that's the reason I put this on our agenda. Um, and uh, I want to make sure that we as zoning commissioners stand behind the good work that we do and let our, our delegation know uh, that um, you know, we see this as a problematic uh, overreach in their scope in taking away some of the powers that have been entrusted to us by the voters of Connecticut. So. That's my, my two cents on it. So I would ask for adoption and I would move adoption of the regulations of the resolution so that we can make that known.
Are you, are you gonna make the motion and then we'll, we'll talk?
Yeah, I make, yep, I just, I move adoption of the resolution as presented.
I second that.
Second, Mr. Henrik. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I think, well, just to start, I think you mentioned that there might be a, a, a few good things in this proposal they brought forward, a minimal few.
Yeah.
But if you take a couple of gold coins and throw them in a bag of crap, it's still a bag of crap.
And uh, You're not gonna reach in for them, right?
Not getting them out. This thing, and I, and I read through some of it, it, and, and, and some of what's here, it, it's, it's amazing to me that somebody can with a serious mind propose something like that. I mean, it takes away all control and all authority within like a quarter mile or half a mile of the transit area, which, which is a huge chunk of our, our downtown area. You want to throw in commercial corridors, which would be Main Street and Barnum Ave and possibly Broadbridge Ave, Nichols Ave, you know, all throughout the town. Uh, that's basically our whole town, you know, so it gives them unlimited opportunity to do whatever they want, whatever they want. Uh, without any, any concern to neighborhoods or their community value or uh, property values, you know, maybe in New York City, something like this would work. But, you know, the same people won't have cars. Yes, maybe they'll have less, but no parking restrictions, no, no height restrictions, no, no restrictions on anything and, and, and they can do it by right. So if somebody can just come in and say, hey, I'm gonna build a, you know, a thirty-story building, you know, right out there on Main Street, i- it's insane. And, and to say that we would no longer have any say or authority that, that, that our opinions or our neighborhoods or our community has no longer has any value. Um, it is, is uh, offensive in my opinion. Um, and I can't see any value in this, you know. I'm throwing the whole bag, even the gold coin, a few gold coins, I'm tossing in the dumpster. Um, it's not worth even trying to fish them out, so. I would wholeheartedly support this. I would, would ask that we forward it over to the council and, and ask for their uh, thoughts on it as well and their support. Uh, so we can come forward as a united town saying, stop this nonsense, you know, balance our budgets, stop messing with our, stop messing with our towns and neighborhoods, but you know, you people in Hartford, stop playing games and, and start balancing the budget so we can live more comfortably and, and enjoy our lifestyle in a community we've chose, not one that they dictate we, we, we uh, we are stuck with.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Henrik. Any further discussion, members?
Oh, yeah, this is Commissioner Francis. Um,
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I just want to say, hey, hey, okay, so this is definitely overreach. I agree with Mr. Hendrick and I mean, we would be actually failing the community that put us in these positions if we even thought about going with that. I mean, I've just taken the voice out of the people totally. Uh, I don't even think that's democratic if you ask me. Well, we're just gonna do whatever we want and no matter what the people that actually live there want to do and put people in place to, you know, you know, to express their words, their worries and concerns. So I, I think this is the crazy notion even. I thought it was a joke, actually. You know, I thought you were like, you know, it's not April yet, so.
Yeah.
I definitely think this is overreaching. I, I would definitely want all of us to stay united on this one.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Any other comments from members?
Uh, the only I have to say is that um,
Yes.
I think uh, yeah, Commissioner Viggly out of here, uh, that, you know, Hartford is just making sure that all the communities are serious about um, affordable housing and, you know, I think with our housing partnership that we're, you know, as a community, we're addressing that.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, you know, we, we're sensitive to that need and that um, you know, uh, having to have anybody from outside the community come in um, i- for, for our purposes is really not necessary.
Yeah, definitely. And I mean, we've been, the fact that we were actually mandated and uh, you know, we've actually had this group together that I've been working with very closely for the last six months to develop the the housing plan, which is going to be submitted probably to the council in the next month or so. Uh, you know, it, it's, it's, it's just sort of disappointing that we've made that much progress on it and, you know, it could say, oh, forget about that. We're gonna, we'll, we'll tell you what to do. Don't worry about what you and who brought the community together to come up with real solutions for a number of these issues, uh, because we understand housing's a big deal. I mean, especially in this part of the woods. You know, in the last year, you know, so much has changed. You have, you know, new people moving into the community. They've changed some of the, increased some of the housing values, so it's, it's, it's definitely a challenge, but it's like to put us, to just throw all that work away and just say, okay, well, we're gonna tell you what to do is just a disappointing thing. So I thank all the members for uh, for your encouraging words on this. And I will make sure it moves forward.
Mr. Nicole.
You want to say anything else?
I just shaking my head over here. It's just pure insanity. It just keeps coming at us. I don't see somebody up, you know, that doesn't live in our community is gonna make a decision what's good for us. We're here, we live here. It should be up to the people in this community to decide what's good for the community. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we also refer it to the council?
Yeah, okay, yeah, I do. Let's uh, yeah, yeah, it's written in there, but let's um, approve, I tell you what, I will alter my motion to approve and refer to the town council with a favorable recommendation. How's that? Would you agree to that as a second, Mike?
I would agree to that with, with a resounding, with a resounding uh,
Resounding recommendation. Very good. All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. Okay, any goal-setting, Jay? Any SEP, oh, MV and liquor filing discussion? You sent me some interesting information this afternoon, which I'm sure you'd like to share with the commission.
Well, and, and, and that's actually something separate, uh, Mr. Chairman, but I, I'd be happy to touch on that as well, so.
Okay.
Um, this is really more of, uh, we, we, we were having some discussions with staff in, in the office about um, you know, when, when in a special case or a, a variance gets approved, it's uh, common practice for those approvals to be filed on land records. As we know, those approvals run with the land um, based on, on case law that we have here in Connecticut. Um, and I think there's been some more recent uh, land use law that especially locally here in Stratford, um, that has likened these approvals of location for a motor vehicle, uh, motor vehicle license and liquor license to, similar to a special case. Uh, you may recall that um, the Harvest House up uh, at Holly Lane, uh, ninety-nine Holly Lane, um, was, uh, my predecessor approved a li- a liquor permit. Uh, it was appealed to court and um, the judge had determined that uh, this approval of location, liquor location uh, is similar to a special case, runs with the land and as long as the, let's say, a, a, a restaurant has a uh, restaurant liquor license and they go out of business, but a new person comes in, there's no break in use. Uh, the next person who wants, assuming they want to do the same exact thing, should be allowed to do so. Um, so, a- and that's the way my office has been treating these uh, motor vehicle licenses. Um, as long as it's like for like, they are not required to do a public hearing as we are following the orders uh, given to us by local, uh, the local courts. Um, same with liquor licenses. And I think we're seeing this trend in, in all, a vast majority of other municipalities. There are still some that require every uh, every new motor vehicle use, regardless whether, of whether it's exactly the same it was approved prior. They're still requiring for public hearings. I don't feel that that's uh, fulfilling the intent of the law, so.
When you say motor vehicle, what do you mean by that?
One more time, I couldn't.
Say again, Mike?
When you say motor vehicle, what do you mean by that? Motor vehicle license?
So, so if um, uh, someone goes on one main street and the zoning commission approves a used car dealership and they attach the standards, standard conditions of approval. And let's say they moved to Milford and uh, you know, someone else comes in, they want to take the same spot, assume all the same conditions. The zoning commission in all actuality shouldn't, should not change their decision based on the exact same use and license, so.
You're doing a motor vehicle sales?
Correct. As long as they want to assume the exact same approval and conditions that you gave the people prior.
I understand that. I just didn't understand the motor vehicle part of it, so, thanks.
Right, right. And it would be similar for a liquor license. So uh, long, coming full circle now. Um, we typically, when a special case or variance gets approved, uh, we require the applicant to submit a sixty-dollar uh, fee for the filing of that on the land records in the town clerk's office. Uh, we are, we have been considering, uh, we currently don't consider uh, this filing check to be submitted with an application. Um, but we have been talking about it internally. We think it might be a good idea to offer the same service um, to preserve those approvals uh, when someone secures them and and so I don't want to just throw in an additional fee on an application that you all vote on. Uh, so I wanted to at least initiate the conversation with you all. Um, maybe give me the permission to continue to talk about it a little further with uh, Attorney Sullivan here to make sure that we are doing everything we're supposed to be doing. Um, and just to see if there is any initial thoughts, uh, I have in a discussion tonight.
So let me make sure I understand it. So you're saying that if somebody assumes the same business, then assess the fee to make sure it's recorded on the records? Is that what you're saying?
No, so, and, and that was a lo- a long-winded just backstory as to why we, why, why we do what we do now. What I'm asking for the commission to consider is to allow us to charge a, have applicants submit their filing fee to us. And if a motor vehicle license or a liquor license gets approved, we take that fee and we go to the town clerk's office with a legal document that says this was approved at this location with these conditions. If they get denied, we just take the check and we send it back to them and we, here you go. It's just so that we're able to make sure that these approvals stay with the land as the uh, case law is, is expecting us to do. So we think that this is appropriate procedure. Um, and um, what we would ultimately like to do is to require that filing fee with uh, motor vehicle applications as well as with liquor applications.
Okay, so that ensures that it is properly recorded as opposed to by us doing it as opposed to the applicant doing it, right?
Correct, correct. So some towns, some towns, they, it's on the applicant to file their approval and you'd be surprised. I mean, my last place, my last place of employment, we were always dealing with folks who never filed their approvals and you'd have a business down the road who would come in and say, oh, I want to do the same thing, but the approval was never there. We eliminate that by, by, and we don't make any money off it. We just take whatever the town clerk would charge them and we file it for them.
Okay. All right, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I think it's, I, this is Pat Sullivan. I think it's a good idea because what happens is um, uh, if you leave it on the applicant to do it, sometimes they don't do it and then there's a question as to whether it, it lapsed or it doesn't apply and uh, otherwise, you know, you're stuck either with the town, you know, having to, to do the recording without the, without the money or chasing the money. So I think it makes sense to have it, to have the, the check brought in with the application. It's only used, you know, if, if you get an approval and it gets, and it gets um, it gets recorded. I think it makes a lot of sense. And I think the, the idea of the second application, it's like if the, if the, the change of ownership doesn't matter. Obviously, they may have, they may have licenses they need from the state as well. I mean, you can't just, you know, have anybody walk in and get a liquor license, but that, that location can, can be preserved and be passed on to the, to the new owner, but it's just a, a change in ownership, not a change in use. So.
I, and, and I would agree. I mean, it's like Attorney Sullivan said, if it's, if it's not recorded, then does it exist? And so to, to And, and so to, 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 to charge a fee to do that, I think, I think it's, it's, it's good for the town to do it, but also for recording the newer, or making sure that the newer stuff, there's a review process, a number of years ago, where zoning fees were based on nothing, and I had asked, um, I think Gary to go and look and just see what the cost was to the town and, and develop a fee structure based on, on, on the cost of running the department and, and kind of present it out, whatever. But, so I, I think this is part of that as well, I mean, there's a time and effort that you have to put into verifying and, and checking and, and ensuring things are recorded, so it would be well worth it to, to file that fee and, and make sure everything, make sure that everything is done correctly as opposed to open or, or not, not doing any type of verification, so I would, I would support it.
And this is Jay Hibansky here, and I just wanted to clarify, I may have not phrased it, um, eloquently, but yeah, we don't make any money on this, this is what they would pay if they were to file it on their own, so. Uh, we feel like we're doing the applicant a service and also kind of eliminating some problems that might arise in the long run. If, if they get denied, we just give them their check back, so.
I wouldn't be opposed to incorporating a, a small fee for the time and effort the zoning commission, uh, not the zoning commission, the zoning office puts into it just to, to cover the, you know, the, the salaries and, and the other expenses that, that go into running your office. It shouldn't be a for-profit endeavor, but it, it should at least, you know, the fee structure should at least cover, at the very least, cover the expenses of the department, so.
Any other comments?
No, I, I concur with all, with everything that was said, pretty much.
Okay.
Covering fees for us, and, uh, and we have it documented and recorded, and we have a track record of it, I think that's a great idea, I would support that.
Okay, anything else on that, Jay, or you wanna talk about the liquor thing? That you sent me today?
Sure, yeah, uh, uh, yeah, that's, it's a good time, so, you know, there was some discussion about, um, a package store, liquor store licenses, and, um, and we, there was, we had an application last month that was approved, and there was some discussion about, you know, how many of these are we approving, and, you know, there seems to be one popping up all over the place, and, and, uh, so I, I, I reached out to, um, the Department of Consumer Protection for the state of Connecticut, and, uh, it looks like the, the state's formula is you're allowed one liquor store or a package store for every twenty-five-hundred residents. So based on that formula, the state will issue a total of twenty-one total liquor license, uh, I'm sorry, package store licenses for town Stratford. Uh, when I looked it up today, and that was a new feature, I don't, at least I've never seen it before, but you, anyone can go look up to see how many a town has and then how many a town has left to, to grant. Uh, and upon looking at it, we've got twenty active liquor store licenses with one to go. So, uh, I, I reached out to, uh, I made a few phone calls today, I'm still waiting to hear back, to determine whether or not, uh, that one that's in the bank is kinda like what we see in Amazon, you know, there's one left in stock, we don't know how accurate that is. So I wanted to see if the one that we approved, that you all approved last month for nineteen oh seven, for nineteen oh seven Main Street, if they have filed yet, and if they have filed, that would put us, um, and I wanna make sure that we know what we're approving so that, uh, we don't waste anyone else's time or money getting an approval from us, and then they go to the state and the state says, no, so.
Yeah, sorry, you're number twenty-two. Yeah, let's try, since there's like twenty-one, let's try to keep a, let's try to keep a log of that so that we know, and we could, if somebody comes in and says, hey, I'm gonna do this, and they are number twenty-two legitimately, we'll say, sorry, you're gonna have to wait till somebody vacates. So, yeah, that's good information.
And I, and I think that once I hear back, uh, and get confirmation as to whether or not that last, uh, package store license was processed, we'll know where we're at, and, uh, it'll be just much easier for us to communicate that to applicants, so, um, I just wanted to relay that to everyone.
Very good, uh, Attorney Sullivan?
Um, I just wanted to tell you that in some towns, these liquor licenses, you know, for, for package stores are like hen's teeth. So they're all taken up, sometimes the store will even close, or, you know, somebody will get a couple of licenses to make sure that they can sort of regulate competition, so it is, um, you know, it's interesting. But some towns, so, you know, Westport being a good example, I mean, they're, all the licenses are taken. And so you basically, you have to wait for, for somebody to, or you have to buy them out. And so people will do that too, and then they get, they get to be pretty pricey, um, because, you know, somebody may have a location, but they don't, but they can't get a license because it's, they're, you know, oversubscribed. So anyway, some, it can be pretty intriguing, 'cause it, you know, you think about it, you know, big liquor store wants to go in, but doesn't have a license. So then they get a license from a store that may be struggling, but they're gonna pay for it, so they're basically gonna, and then they're gonna move, relocate the license to another location where they're, you know, coming in. So there's a lot of intrigue behind all that, anyway.
We actually had to deal with this once before, and it was in, um, what was formerly Crunch, the gym. Uh, there was an applicant that wanted to put in a liquor store there, and under our previous way our regulations were written, you couldn't have any within a certain radius, and the owners of the, um, the pharmacy that's there, I'm forgetting the name off the top of my head, the owners of the pharmacy had a liquor permit, not because they had a bar in the back, but because under, it was extremely old permit that actually they needed because of certain drugs they were mixing, certain brands, certain types of thing, they actually needed to have a permit, they weren't really using it all that much anymore, and so eventually they went and actually, the liquor store people went and actually had somehow arranged for the, uh, the pharmacy to surrender their permit so that they were actually able to make the application. Ultimately, it was defeated on a, on a different issue, but yeah, that, that caused a lot of intrigue, I remember that one.
Yeah, that was based on.
Rotary drug, that's what it is, rotary drugs, yeah.
That was based on, we approved it, and it, and then it got, uh, it got overturned based on the way they did the measurements.
Yeah, that was a weird one. Be prepared, now that Crunch is gone, who knows, we're gonna be going down that road again, we'll see. Okay, uh, let's see here, bring up the agenda again, any S A E P, P O C D, T O D, anything, Jay? Alphabet soup?
Nothing, no, nothing, no updates after my updates last month.
Okay, so our next, uh, our regular meeting would be April twenty-eighth. I don't know that we're gonna need the one on the fourteenth, but obviously, but if something comes up, we'll let you know. Um, and if not, we'll send out a cancellation, so otherwise we'll have, uh, April twenty-eighth will be our next. Hopefully we get together, all right? So we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'm motion to adjourn.
Did everybody freeze there?
Second.
Make the motion, is there a second?
I think, Mr. Bigley outta here.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Yeah. All right, okay, and we're adjourned at eight PM, everybody have a good night, Easter for those who see you that are, and we'll see you next month. Bye-bye.